I had coaches like all these things. And he was like, hey, I'm team on deck. I was like, me? She's like, lunch, lunch. And then I was like, turn around, and we left. And I was like, oh my god. He's like, the guy who don't really listen to that. I was like, I mean, get your. And he like, talked to us out of which. So also doing like, uh, then like, you know, the next matches, right? He goes to the show there.
Oh, were you there for that?
Mm-hmm. Well, they're playing. And he still placed fifth with the Boston Children. Two years.
Plays what?
He, fifth place, did eight, two years ago with the Boston Children.
It's very funny. It's very loud. Like, I got a friend that, during my, my son. He's, I mean, of course, I've been, like, in the way that, and, and, and. So, I mean, it's all actually very funny.
Yeah, we don't have like a lot.
Nothing busted.
I was a little, I felt a little bit, you know.
I, I, I'm like, I'm gonna pull on it, so please. Thank you.
Yeah, it's, we should, okay.
I'd like to call this evening's study session to order. Can we please start by standing for the flag salute?
Our flag is just.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, to the citizens, to our nation, under God, indivisible, et cetera.
You need to eat.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional, traditional and ancestral historical lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial, and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor, honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. Part four point O is a jump straight into, uh, our study session item, which is the strategic plan. I'll pass it to Josh unless you want to start.
Yeah, we're just gonna just give you a little overview. I just want to remind folks at home that are watching, we started this process, uh, with you folks way back in August. When you made it was one of your goals, uh, our current strategic plan is, uh, is ready to sunset at the end of the 2025. And you made it one of your goals to do a process this year. Uh, and we've asked, uh, Ms. Tanisha Jumper to help us lead through that process. And we, uh, have been going through, uh, doing some, uh, study sessions. Uh, we have had some retreat sessions, uh, with you, uh, throughout the year. And tonight, uh, Tanisha has, uh, going to take us, uh, through some of our, uh, survey results and give you some updates. Uh, remind you that we have, um, a lead team that is helping Tanisha work through some of this. And, um, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Tanisha to give us some, uh, updates and where we are with some next steps.
All right, thank you so much. Um, so just ever, just to kind of start us off, um, the strategic plan is for the purpose of not that we would redo everything or that it, it doesn't have to encompass every single thing that we do, but where are the areas we want to focus strategically to move our district forward? And so, the strategic plan that is sunsetting, um, is a great plan. Actually took you guys through all the way through the pandemic, through, uh, took us through the pandemic while you guys didn't hear for that. And now it's like, where do you want to focus in the future? That's, that got you to this point, now where do you want to focus? And so, um, we have done a few things and I think, let's take this there. Okay, so this is when the survey opened. We said we wanted to get some feedback from people about vision, values, kind of the gr- setting the groundwork for the strategic plan. And so here's just the timeline of when things happened, um, and when the survey closed. And, um, so yeah, I don't need to read that to you. Um, so here's the results. We, we got back, um, two thousand two hundred, um, res- uh, responses. Um, as you can see, a large percentage of that was our parents, that, of people who are parents in our district. Um, we send it out to community partners, we send it through, um, the newsletter, we emailed people, and we had, um, members of cabinet reach out to, to individuals that they, they worked closely with to get feedback for this. Um, oh, we also sent it to students, sorry. Um, so when you look at this, this is the feedback on our values and, um, maybe, just keep it a little bit. As you can see, we had some pretty, um, clear responses, um, with personal and physical safety, student-focused, cultural respect and inclusiveness, equitable, equitable resources and access, and anti-racism being the top five kind of values that stuck out. And again, this doesn't mean that we won't do all of these things, it's just saying that this is where people really kind of honed in. And you can see there's some pretty big margins between the things that were most voted and, and not. So it's not like, you know, there are some things people really want us to focus on. When you look at graduates, we asked the question, what attributes, skills or attributes should students have when they graduate from Tacoma Public Schools? And you can see there were, um, um, there were several that stuck out. So you have critical thinker, effective communicator, resilient and adaptable, lifelong learners, collaborative and collaborative team members for things that people would like to see in graduates as they leave, um, our school district. We asked, um, what skills and attributes should the adults that work, oops, if I go back some?
Oh, you right-click and do previous.
I can't see that.
Left on your arrow key.
Thank you.
Again, you have to click out of the thing, not left.
One more.
There you go.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, they would like, so these are some of the things that they would want to see in our graduates when they leave here. For the adults in our environment, um, some of the things that scored the highest were student-centered advocate, ethical and trustworthy, mentor and coach.
Thank you.
Connected and relatable, resilient and adaptable. Um, we went, part of our process was for somebody that I didn't get the individual meeting with. Um, when we met with the student council, they gave us some things that they thought should be on there, that, what they would like to see in the students. And connected and relatable was one of the ones that they suggested that we added. And it came out on top as something that people were looking for. So when we look at the system, um, there's some of the things that came out on top were effective communication, student-centered, safe and supportive, collaborative culture, and accountability. So I kind of want you just to hold this as like, the vision of what people want out of the strategic plan and not necessarily tie, like, a one-for-one. But this, this is just kind of the global idea of what they want. I guess I would like to ask at this point, is there anything that you're like surprised isn't on there or something that you're like, that's interesting? You know, just feedback that you have from, from the results? All right.
Was there?
No, I'm.
I guess, I would, I would say that, um, I'm actually pretty pleased that, that there's so many, so much consistency from the different groups that were spoken to about what they wanted. And I love what the, the students added. I think that, um, really speaks to our, our commitment to get student voice because they really do know what's up. And, you know, uh, and I think that, that it's important to, to work with them. So I'm, I'm actually pleased with what I'm seeing here.
In, in, in this same, uh, slide, I'm, I don't want to say shocked, but I guess it caught my eye that amongst the lowest of these was, uh, data-driven decision-maker. Um, which, I mean, it is what it is at this point, but I just would be shocked. Or, or I think I would be interested to hear if, I'm, I don't think that this is an option, but to hear some of the reasoning behind why data-driven decision-making was not scored, or have received higher scores or higher selections, more selections.
So we, we had a chance to unpack this a little bit at cabinet, and we had some similar thoughts, you know, is, so, is it because people see that the organization is already doing those things? Um, we had a conversation, well, accountability is in that, right? So, you know, we, we are doing some force driving in this, right? There is some bias already. We are driving people to choose these things already. And so, um, when you, you're choosing between accountability and data-driven, you may not in that space. And so, um, uh, we, we were unpacking some of those same things in that space. Um, and then Tanisha reminded us, it doesn't mean that people, uh, don't value these things. It's that we ask them to prioritize some of these. And, and I think it's natural that we, uh, we as cabinet members, we're like, well, does that mean we don't do those? And Tanisha reminded us, well, of course, we always have to be data-driven, right? Especially with, um, when we are trying to drive results, uh, with such limited resources, we have to be data-driven in those spaces. And so, um, we, we don't have the luxury of stopping doing s- in, in data-driven. Um, it just doesn't mean that we have to lead, uh, our conversations with effective communication necessarily with data-driven, um, in that space.
And I think there's, well, there's also a similarity with, um, between question three and four about technology savvy and/or technology, uh, technologically proficient. And like similar, like similar scores in both categories, which is interesting. And I would think, well, there is already so much technological, um, savvy that students already come with, right? They're, so I, I could see where that's not as much of a need because it's so integrated into daily life, so.
The one that fascinated, I think, uh, when we go back to, uh, the graduate, uh, portrait, uh, we, we unpacked a effective communicator, right? And then we, uh, as parents, we were, uh, really thinking about our own kids, right? Uh, and, well, of course, we want to be effective communicators because, uh, I don't know, when we raise teenagers, how was your day? Fine.
Or won't make enough.
What'd you learn?
Nothing.
Right? What's wrong? Nothing. Right? And so, you know, and, and then we see, uh, a lot of the, the, um, tension amongst relationships. And I think we forget, uh, developmentally, how we're trying to put words to our emotions in that age groups. And so I think we value that as adults and we want that for our kids. Uh, and we want them to be resilient and adaptable. And so what was really fascinating for me in that one, if we, and I don't mind, if we can click back there, we saw a pretty big gap, uh, in that space, um, really above the top three, um, in that space. Uh, a critical thinker, effective communicator, and resilient and adaptable. They had a pretty big gap between the rest of them. And, uh, I know we asked folks to select most, uh, the five most, but I, I think that, you know, it's, it's okay for us also to say, you know, uh, although there isn't a one-to-one correlation, um, but that these may be the priorities that we put efforts in to try to tell the stories, to try to figure out what kind of data that we want to bring back to say, how are we bringing and building effective communicators? Critical thinkers, building resilient and adaptive learners in our systems? And not that we won't build collaborative team members, but maybe we don't need to do more than three.
Right. Right.
And there's crossovers in all those, right? I mean, if you're an effective communicator, then you're also a collaborative team member.
Right. And there's things that we will track and at, for data points, and there's things that will just, it'll be part of our embedded how, you know, how you build a culture, right? So how do you create, and we have lots of, we went yesterday to hunt and we got to see, you know, the after-school program and how kids were leading. There's, were all types of opportunities for collaborative leadership in that. There was one teacher with a whole cross-country team that was practicing inside, and there was different leaders. And, and so just having those things as principles we want to instill in, in students where we might not track it because it is more of a soft thing, but it is a principle that you see over and over and over again. Like, how do you track that we have people using, you know, student voice? Like, we're gonna ask the question, we're gonna help teachers learn how to do that better, but we might not have that on a chart somewhere because it is a thing that is a little bit squishy, but it's still a principle that we want to hold and that we want to keep getting better and better at. And maybe at some point we figure out a way to actually track it, right? But not knowing exactly how we're gonna track it today doesn't mean that we don't say that it's a value that we want to grow and create down the future. Because this is a strategic plan, we should not be looking at what we're doing right now. We should be looking at way out here, where, where are we going and how do we want to get there?
And when I look at the critical thinker, um, and I see, I mean, there's just like a, a thread between the top five anyways, but with the level of, um, literal, uh, uh, digital literacy that is necessary in, in, you know, the last, especially the last five to ten years, like being able to be a criti- critically think about what information are you receiving? And then, you know, even like an effective communicator, how do you then question or analyze and, you know, determine like, what am I reading? And how do you assess? And where do you go to get that other information? So that's just something that, um, I, I, would jumps out at me in, and when I think about, I wonder if that was something that was a driver behind being, you know, a critical thinker just because of there is so much misinformation and it is easy to spread and, you know, and it takes time to verify.
One of the, and I don't want to make sure that I'm not jumping ahead so I don't see it in your notes, so.
Okay.
One of the things that I think we want to test with you tonight is your tolerance. As we've dove into this and as we tried to think about how would we measure some of these things? And so using the hunt example of student voice on the backside of the hunt model is, is we do have a dashboard for participation, right? And we are able to measure who's involved and how many activities in those things. And the next level is, is, and as we have foreshadowed, the, the next four years are going to be very difficult with budget and life. We want to know your tolerance for, what would your, the opening slide was a, a five-year strategic plan. What would your tolerance be for a ten-year strategic plan? Where we could really try to unpack what would be tools for that, you know, uh, critical thinker measurement, you know, as we lean in and build that because it'll take us some time, you know, but if we, if we turn and burn and just change, I mean, you know, the, and you folks weren't all around, the first dashboard took us some time to build. We spent a lot of time and money and infrastructure and it was the right thing to do. And then we made a conscientious decision to keep some of those same benchmarks for that same reason. And now we're to that place, if, if we make that same investment, um, and we start to build out, it will take some time and money and infrastructure to build that, but I would, I would advocate that we would need some time. And, uh, you know, I don't, I don't have that sweet spot, but if you're like, ten years is too long, we don't want to invest in those kind of things. I think these are kind of timeless skills.
Is this where you would like us to talk about the possibility of a ten-year? Or would you like?
It's, it's down the road. It's, it's a couple slides away, but I want you to hold that thought as we think about these, these goal statements and then.
Oh, there it is.
Think about.
Slide fourteen. Sorry. I heard Josh say, I may be jumping ahead.
Yeah, okay. I'll stop. I told you I was off today. I haven't drank coffee either, all day.
Okay.
I know. It was so good. So good.
All right, focus back.
So.
Right back here.
So this is just kind of reviewing what we just talked about. So the following values should be represented across the organization and throughout the strategic plan. Personal, physical safety, student focus, cultural respect and inclusiveness, equitable resources and a, access, and anti-racism. Um, as we continue to refine our system, with these skills and attributes should be present and woven into our practices as we support students becoming graduates, adults as they teach and support students, and sist- as, as the system ensures the best learning and work environments for all. So if you think about these, like, how are we using these to screen when we're doing interviews and bringing people in? How are we using these things to have kids assess themselves and look at their self? How are we as a system assessing ourselves and holding ourselves accountable to these things? So this is just the, the large framework that we think about as we go into the actual goal statements. And you'll see some of the language, some of the wording appear in some of these statements. So, since we're not at the point of having specific goals where we can track, um, we did our, I did my best to articulate, um, a, a goal statement. So students are ready to learn and teachers are prepared and resourced to teach them. Students have equitable access to preschool programs, academic and elective programs throughout elementary and secondary school that challenge, engage, and develop them. Staff create real-world connections that relate to student interest. Students graduate with the skills, experience, and knowledge that prepare them for the life after high school. Thoughts, responses, anything missing in that statement?
Mm-hmm, pretty much covers it.
Okay.
I will say on the, on the previous slide, um, when it's all written out like that, students, graduates, adults, staff, and, and the system, it is really interesting, sort of the, the braidedness of it. I mean, I think it's, it's great that they're actually, the, the things we want our adults to be are actually gonna help stimulate the effective communication and resilience in our students. So I mean, I just, I like that. That's how it planned out.
All right.
Yeah, I'm a fan of this statement.
Okay.
Okay, moving backwards.
Yep.
So I was reading, um, on the adult portrait.
Uh-huh.
So I moved ahead and I moved backwards. So there, on the adult staff partners, we have those five. But resilient and adaptable actually at less than conflict resolver, which was at nine oh three. And then resilient and adaptable is at eight fifty-four.
I trust your math.
Oh, no, I just, I went up and double-checked twice, I was like, okay.
So I'm, I, I appreciate that, Chelsea. I'm advocating that m- maybe there's not five.
I, I don't think there is five, but I just think if, if it's going based on the numbers, because that's why I was double-checking all of them because I'm like, okay, are these numbers making sense to me? Um, and then how we end up putting them there because I think in this new day and age, I mean, I taught preschool in two thousand and six, then I taught preschool in twenty twenty-one. And I will say that preschool in two thousand and six and preschool in twenty twenty-one, there's new problems, like, and there's, and there's new, um, skill sets you need to have. And I think, um, including conflict resolver, just in our thoughts.
Mm-hmm.
Just including that in our thought process as we're going through some of the statements.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I appreciate that, like, and my, my comment to you is just like the, the math piece is like, I appreciate the math is like, the, the math. Uh, but I, I want to like, how are you guys feeling like the gaps? Like, do you feel like there has to be five? Because like, I feel like when there's like such a gap, like, the first one, students and graduates, there was three that was really.
Yeah.
Separated. I feel like there should only be three.
Maybe, yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
And then the, the second one, like, the adult one, there was four that was very separated.
Right.
And then the, 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 the system, there was five that were separated. So I'm advocating that there are three, four, and five.
Yeah, yeah, that's what it looks like to me, too.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
No, but I added three, four, and five to help me. I like that.
I'm, I'm taking some notes for us doing this, so let me.
All right, so for partnership and participation, um, we create an ecosystem where community shows up for our students. Families are valued, informed, and supported as key partners in their students' education. Students are engaged in the broad range of extracurricular activities. Community partners and organizations provide opportunities and experience to students that keep them engaged, safe, and healthy before, during, and after school. We develop and nurture partnerships that benefit the entire community.
I really liked the last sentence. I mean, I like it all, but I really like the closer.
One of the, one of the many things, I think Tanisha did a really good job, is when she talks about adults, she talks about partners, adults, educators pretty consistently throughout, not just a single role inside of the, in that space. So I think that really is inclusive.
Is there anything missing?
I think it makes, um, each person in the community feel like an actual stakeholder. And so it brings everyone to the same table in one phr- or like in one phrasing, so I, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, I think he's sworn for defenses. I mean, in the drafting, a lot of times when you write your first draft of something, it's not the best draft, but, I mean.
You're doing a really good job.
Yeah, you are. You are too, but. Folks really oftentimes lost their words, but like, okay, keep that energy.
I think to also build on Chelsea's comments and, and that last sentence, it is, it is framing it that this isn't just one system's responsibility. This isn't one organization. This isn't one role. This is a, this is, and to me, it encapsulates what we have also been driving towards and, you know, what really led, you know, our push for partnership around summer late nights and why. Like this, like, the, you know, the gun violence in our community that are impacting our students is not a school district issue, right? And it, and this, I think that we've also, as a community, um, collectively found a way to weave that together and, and some of the results are summer late nights. And so.
And so as we were talking about this on our smaller team, one of the things we're talking about also is we don't, we do not talk about the other work we do in terms of building buildings, making, you know, strategic investments in local companies. We don't talk about that as part of our work, but we, operationally, it is absolutely part of our work. It's what we think about all the time. That's why every time a school opens, you have the contractors who built the school standing outside, holding the sign. And so we're doing it, but we're not elevating that as strategically, this is how we are playing our role as a good partner in this community. And so I wanted to be able to speak to that so that we can find metrics that allow us to amplify that and hold that up as a way that we do business.
It's good.
All right, the last goal, um, we think holistically about the needs of people. We create spaces where students and staff are safe, supported, and valued. Student's voice is valued in decision-making. Students have the support they need. Access to food, transportation, and caring adults to navigate the school system. Students are able to identify a trusted adult and staff are ethical and trustworthy, creating a culture of accountability.
I really like the first sentence. I think that I work with little littles a lot, and that's where I spent all of today. So that's why my mind's right there. People don't often see children as people. They're definitely second-class citizens, um, as they don't really often feel valued and heard and respected. And I think by being so straightforward about the spaces we want to have for people, the children, people, I think it's really important to start off that way. And then after you identify for people, then we go into, these are the students. And like the students is just another adjective on top of the fact that they are people. So I really like that.
Is there anything missing? Anything you feel like there's a gap in there?
I always look where we're going to get stuck. Yep, this is where we're going to get stuck, right? And the one where we get stuck is, is that, you know, the student voice is valued in the decision-making, right? And where to get stuck is, uh, it's always around staffing, right? It's around, uh, when it's difficult times around budget decisions, right? Those are the things. And so I just, I, I, I think that it's important that we call those things out in that space. It doesn't mean that, uh, you know, we have to follow collective bargaining agreements. It doesn't mean that we are not valuing student voice, but we still have to follow laws and rules and agreements during that process. So I just think that it's important that we acknowledge that space. And I don't think you can put that in a statement necessarily. But I think, I think we should just call it.
What that sentence also makes, the first thing I thought of with that, the student voice is valued in decision-making is what stories are we telling? To demonstrate that student voice is valued in decision-making, right? Because it isn't necessarily always something that is visible, but how do we then tell that story, right? Whether it's through data, whether it's through program offering, whether it's like, you know, I mean, list a thing. But that was the first thing was about how are we telling that story?
And I also think, I'm going to, talking to Lisa about this a little earlier today, um, in community engagement, there's like, I'm going to mess it up. It's like three I A P something, uh, framework, right? Which says that when you are asking a person a question, you inform them when I'm telling, when I'm asking for your input, and when we are collaboratively designing. And I think there's some of that that happens where we aren't clear about who and what we're asking. And so then there are times where people think, well, I gave my input and so you, I, I said I cared about technology, technological savvy. Well, it didn't get enough points, but I said it, so I expect it to show up here. Versus I'm, I'm asking you to give me some feedback that I will use how I can. I'm like, is if you ask it, you know, I, I spend a lot of time in out-of-school time, right? Kids want pizza every day. Um, as the adult in the room, I have to say, well, pizza every day is not a good choice. So we can have pizza on Fridays, but we're going to eat fruit on Tuesdays and Thursdays. And, and so yes, I hear you and I value your input, but there's enough time and place where it's appropriate or not appropriate. And so it's the valued in decision-making doesn't, and maybe we need to just wordsmith it, but like valued in decision-making doesn't mean that everybody gets a say in everything. We have a, we have a, a school to run and, and we have experts that know what's the thing and, you know, and we should trust that, but also, you know, we're not doing this in a vacuum. So what parents and what students and the teachers feel and need is also important and we have to find a way to mix all those things together to get the outcomes we want.
I think what's missing from this statement that was in the last statement, um, is the holistic picture. So safe and supportive, like we're identifying students and we're identifying staff. And like, we're not necessarily identifying like community partners, because there's a lot of partners and volunteers and parents in our schools. I do appreciate, uh, Josh, your comment about student voice. Because student voice is valued, is it valued in decision-making is the question. And is it required in decision-making is the second question to that. So not touching it, because that's murky, but, um, just adding like the last statement was so holistic because it included so many different pieces of, um, the ecosystem, um, and then it's safe and supportive. In order for this ecosystem to work, there are a lot of moving pieces that are more than just students and staff.
What if, and maybe we're, I don't know if the word sniffing is, if that's where we are at this point, but you got me thinking.
I know, right?
But thinking about the first sentence, we think holistically about the needs of people within our system. Because that would, that would encompass, because also you're looking, I mean, I would look at it from it, these, these statements build on each other, right? And they're, and they're interdependent upon each other. So if you want, you know, in keeping with, and I agree with like that piece of the holistic, um, aspect. And, and I don't know that you have to identify each category or each grouping of people, but just adding like something that, that says, you know, um, reflects that there are multiple people within our system, right? Students, staff, partners, families, um, yeah, so.
Okay. So it's great feedback. Thank you. All right. So, oops. All right. So here we are.
Look at that.
Now we're here.
Are you ready, Josh?
What do you guys think about ten years?
How many slides did you jump ahead?
It's okay.
Thank you. Thank you for being so gracious with me. I really appreciate it.
I didn't put a judgment on it. I was asking.
We had a conversation. There were certain things that didn't show up the way you thought they would.
I was critically thinking about the technicality of how forward we went on the slides. That's all.
You know, though, I feel like that is a side of a good leader who's thinking big picture, thinking far ahead. Farther ahead in the slides, you know, than all of us.
Thank you. Thank you. So always so polite and nice to me.
Use it. I was waiting for you to do something with that damn gavel.
All right. So, um, so thinking about this vision that the community has kind of said for us that they want us to hold, thinking about those very broad statements, is it realistic to think a five or 10-year time span to accomplish that? And what is your appetite for that? Um, because that does change what data we could collect, the frequency of the data we could collect in terms of things like how students feel. We do a climate survey. We do it every two years. If you do a five-year survey, I only get to ask those questions twice in that five-year period. Is that enough to actually set a trend or to be able to learn, adjust, adapt, do something different? But then there's also, you know, some of you might not be sitting here in 10 years. And is that, is that?
You all are.
My bad.
Don't you come at me like that.
So yeah, so thinking about, thinking about that, like really, there are definitely some pros to having a longer timeline to really dig into these very meaty things that we want to create. But there is the, you know, there's the pressure of wanting results. And so shorter timelines force you to pick less things and get quicker results, but maybe not as long-lasting results. Longer, longer timelines allow you to create a culture and show trends over time. That, that, that would be my short assessment of which one, what do you get out of both of those?
It, it seems to me, um, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of the 10-year because I think, um, we're building and creating and changing. And if you just look at, I'm just going to use an example, Whole Child. And that was 12 years from the time it was implemented till the time that it was fully in the system and that people are owning it. And it's becoming, you know, the community partners are picking it up. It just takes time. And I think the other thing about a 10-year plan is that we don't have to set it up like everything, you know, that we're doing is going to come to fruition in some happy party at 10 years. I mean, we, we, there's, it's steps along the way. And I think, you know, you were saying here, two or three goals in each area. Well, you could have a short-term goal, a middle-term goal, and a long-term goal within a 10-year plan. So that you're getting there and you're getting there, um, methodically. Something is dragging, you know, for some reason it isn't moving as quickly, you've got time to still get there. So anyway, I, that's my initial thought process on it.
I didn't come in thinking I would even be considering a 10-year plan, but now when I think about it, like the reality of the situation where we are four years from now, like four years of this five-year strategic plan is going to be a time of like, it's going to be a tough time. So you seem to be trying to choose my, choose my words carefully. So I think that we really set ourselves up for success by considering 10 years. I'd be in favor of it, right, to kind of take some of the pressure off the nerve and give us time to work in and grow into, uh, the things that we're really trying to work towards. So I mean, I know we're not making any decisions, but I would just say that I'm in favor of, of considering 10.
It also changes, 10 years changes the framing in like when we think about, so I'll just name the thing because we are in the beginning of a four-year period where we, there is a significant amount of uncertainty as to what's going to happen federally. And so that will have impacts, right? It's already having impacts. So a 10-year plan actually pushes you, will push us outside of a four-year cycle. Right? And then, okay, so you get through four-year cycles and then either there is a change or there isn't a change. And often those changes, when there is one, can be substantial, right, to the impacts of public education. And so a 10-year plan, I could see, I mean, I'm, I'm really curious to talk about the, um, cons, like what are some of the cons? And as you all, assuming you might have discussed this already as a team, like what you all identified. So I'm super curious about like identifying what are some of the cons with a 10-year plan? While also at the same time, it, it is in an entirely different way of thinking. And I really appreciate that because we are doing very robust systematic changes. And we also went through, if you look back four years, we went through a massive system, systems change, right? Like, so I think that if we had a, um, a long-range strategic plan, it would possibly help get us more rooted in, you know, and, and maybe guide us, not, I don't know, better is quite the right word, but maybe differently than like looking at it in five years. Because say, you know, we start 2020 and then, well, 2020, right, happened. And so, and then how do you maintain the strategic plan within the, the circumstances of that period of time? So I, I find it really fascinating to consider. Um, I'm definitely open to it. I'm just really curious.
I got a, just a point of clarification too, before you answer that. Is there anything that says you adopt a 10-year strategic plan that halfway through you can't revisit and adjust?
No, unless there's a strict or rigid statutory mechanism that you as a board have to adhere to, that the state law sets. Unless there's one of those, that which the board can do, the board can modify or undo. It would take the same mechanism, if a board vote on the goal, you need to do that same process to do a modification. So five years in, you could modify.
Uh, just a couple of things to consider. Uh, in essence, that's what we've just done as a 10-year strategic plan. Basically, in five years, we rolled over many of our benchmarks. And I would say we got better every year, you know? We, uh, we have adopted a culture of continuous improvement in the Tacoma Public Schools. Uh, through our cap plans, our teachers, our staff, our principals, our coaches, we all have adopted a, a culture of continuous improvement. So that's the culture we have. So whatever the indicators of success are, we're not going to wait. We, you know, I'll remind you is just some of the small things that we've done is, uh, you know, 2020, we started a small online school, right? Uh, online school went from 5,000 kids to a self-sustaining K-12 school that serves 1,500 kids. You know, we created a, a flex system that serves, you know, nearly a thousand kids in a brick-and-mortar flex program in the last four years. We started a skill center that typically takes well over a decade in a partnership with another municipality. We don't go slow in anything that we do. I just, right? And so, you know, 10 years is, yes, there's a lot of things that happen, um, but when it hit me in this idea, that's what we really just did. We, we made some adjustments in five years, but we were in a culture of this. And I think now is the right time to set 10 more years. And really, I think what the beauty of what we're doing now is we're not rolling over the, the indicators, the success criteria, we're starting over with a new vision, a new platform. And, you know, uh, it's been, you know, makes me kind of, ooh, you know? And so, uh, but it's the right thing to do. And so I think we do need 10 years to like really lean into it, to build the infrastructure. And we're not going to let some things go, right? We don't let things like extracurricular activities go. We don't let graduation rates go, right? That's the core business of what they do. Those will be indicators of success of critical thinking. You know, we'll do things like, I can imagine, I'm not dictating this. Well, what is an indicator of critical thinking? Okay, are kids graduating? Are they graduating with a, a college-level class? And are they graduating with an industrial-recognized certification? What is the percentage of kids that graduate with all three of those? Those are indicators of our kids graduating with critical thinking skills.
I would say too, like, I, I mean, I remember when we were, um, rolling over, uh, the strategic plan. And at that moment, like it was, we had so much instability that we felt, like, I just remember like conversations about wanting to maintain some stability. So keeping that trajectory going, like, and so, but in that moment, it was in part because of the circumstances we were under. And so this, we would be starting from the, like, the framework of 10 years, which is different. But we've already, to your point, Josh, we've already seen that that's essentially what has been done, but now we can do it with intentionality.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, you know, as I was reflecting on that too, is, you're right. You're right from your perspective. I thi- I think it was a combination of, as I was remembering the conversation, right, uh, you know, March 13th of that year. Uh, we had already been doing work on the strategic plan because we adopted the strategic plan, right, April 3rd in there. And so we were right on the end of bringing that to the closure pieces. But the comments that I remember was this, like, this last five years happened so fast, right, in that space, right? And then there was so much unknown, right, in that space. And so I think, um, I think it's just an opportunity to learn from that experience to say, like, 10 years seems like a sweet spot to like, to your point of like, to change a whole culture or community for the better.
I think that, um, 2021, Chelsea, y'all know where I started. So I think not to be like fully contrarian, the thing I hate about systems is that it's a system. Um, in 2030, it'll be a consensus year. Um, by 2030, every member of this current board will have gone through an election. By 2035, there'll be the 2028 presidential and the 2032 presidential. We're seeing now how federal impacts happen. Within the time between now and then, there'll be five state house legislative turnovers happening in Washington State. I think, um, the thing about thinking big, which we have to do. I think um the thing about thinking big, which we have to do because our job is to govern a system, is to think ten years from today, every single one of the chess pieces on this board, which is this current group, may not be in these seats. So I think if we are going to do like a ten year plan, it has to be so intentional. So it doesn't matter if Malik gets a new job that pays him fifty million dollars, he has to go somewhere else, you know, and we get a new
I'm I'm gonna go work for Malik.
Me too, me too. I'm trying to go, I'm trying to go with him. You know what I'm saying? So I'm like, and if, and if every member here says
It's for the children. We work for the children.
You're doing this for the children and the pay. Um, so we're all, but I'm just saying, we have to think about these things. And so, uh, I like the idea of a ten year plan. I don't like it for the reasons that I know in five years, the majority of us will still be at this table. But I don't know if in ten years, the majority of us, including the staff, will be at this table. And so there's this whole part of systems happening to people as opposed to people being a part of systems. And that goes back to that student voice is valued in decision making, right? And it's, and it's not about student voice, it's about all the voices
Right.
that are present in this conversation. And so I I agree with the idea of a tenure if it is very, very intentional. And I think that we're on the path towards setting up a very proactive and intentional strategic plan, but just also acknowledging that we are all part of a cumbersome system that the wheel will keep turning regardless of who's here and who's not.
Right.
And so I, twenty twenty one Chelseaa really hates that. Um, reflective and better Chelseaa, trying to get on board with the understanding that doesn't matter if I'm in this seat or a Jimbo down the street's in this seat, if we're all here for the right reasons and we're setting this plan in motion, that Jimbo down the street can do what I'm trying to do in this seat and that whoever else becomes a member of this chess game.
And I think the opportunity you have in a ten year plan is you get to set the intervals.
Yeah.
How often do you wanna review? How often do you wanna look at data? How often do you wanna set different courses? Which, without necessarily rebuilding the whole thing.
Got it.
You know, you you set your, your time, your timestamps in it to tweak and to fix, to focus, to say, you know what? We're we're killing it over there. We need to focus more energy on this part without having to do the whole big process again. Because you've, you've set the, you've you've set your GPS. This is where we wanna go. But now, oh, there's a, there's a traffic jam over here, so we're gonna, we're gonna take the streets. We're gonna not take the highway. And this other one, oh, we're hopping on the highway because we can get there fast. Like, it gives you that flexibility versus having to stop at five years and redo the whole plan and start. And and also gives staff and families the assurance of this is where the, this is where we're going to. We know where we're going to. I know how to get on board with where we're going. As a community partner, I can plan for ten years how I'm aligned with Tacoma Public Schools. And if you think about Metro Parks and all the different groups who have really aligned
Parks Tacoma.
Parks Tacoma.
Sorry, Parks Tacoma. One day.
All these groups that have aligned to us, that really allows them the stability of like, I've just changed all my things to align. And now they changed it. Now, now what do I do, right? There there's some security in that that allows people to just continually get better.
Got it.
And I'm gonna, I think it does make a difference who sits at the table, you know, and I think uh there's a tension in that, right, in this system, right? And I appreciate that. And not all systems have to be bad. And I recognize that all systems are not perfect. You know, um, I think your point, Tanisha, is really important is that, you know, when I first got here, we had folks that were partnering us with us to improve third grade reading scores. That wasn't part of their core mission, right? Uh, you know, the Boys and Girls Club shouldn't be helping us try to improve third grade reading scores. They should be helping us try to provide safe places with kids.
Right.
And so I think it's important that, you know, uh, we, we know that there are gonna be rocky times. There is a lot of value in sustained leadership of, at the board. Teacher level, ESP level, district level, where it makes a difference. It makes a difference that, you know, when those, when those times where folks get angry over a single issue, that, yeah, that issue may be relevant, but that is not the story of the whole system.
Right.
We have to remember that. We've been through rocky times. There are gonna be more rocky times. Tacoma Public Schools does good work. And that's not the institution, it's all the people uh that are part of the system.
Right.
And so I just, I think that's not to be lost. And we have to keep on working on that.
So, um, as I was listening and I appreciated your comments, there, I remember especially when I first joined the board, there were things that I that there were decisions that I got to be a part of that had already been set in motion before I got here. And right, and then learning that context in here and and what I inherited, right, as a collection of the new makeup of the board. And I still see um points of time, but I mean, I can, I can think of some very specific mo- points of time where we had to make decisions around SROs, for example. And there were decisions that the board of twenty seventeen, I think, they had set things in motion that then allowed for the decisions that were made in twenty twenty
Yep.
and in twenty twenty one, right? And so the inheriting of what work was done previous as a body that I joined, right? And learning that, like, I I I've, I didn't know, I I didn't have the awareness to be, to appreciate that, right, until you're in the seat.
Right.
Right? There's just a lot that you don't know until you're here. You don't know how you're gonna govern, if you've ever governed before, until you start governing, like, you, there's just no way. Um, and so I, I, so I just think a lot about the the work that did happen over time and then the work that, you know, as you were coming on, what did we do? And then, you know, incorporate you into the forward decision making, right? So, and then the other thing, Tanisha, that you said about the tenure plan reminded me, and I actually I remember as a parent, looking at Tacoma Public Schools and thinking Whole Child was just like, I mean, just a an idea, right? It wasn't even really implemented at then, you know, like, but that was one of the big pieces that I thought, as I look at the trajectory of my child's time in this system.
Yep.
Right? Like, it was a very influential decision as a parent for me to go, well, I want to, you know, I wanna choose this system to invest in my child because of these things. I don't know, it doesn't look this way in twenty twelve, right, that it, that it did when she graduated.
Right.
But there was a trajectory that I could see, to your point, Tanisha, that I could look at the priorities of the district and say, oh, those are values that I want to align with my family. And I want my student to learn and grow with.
Right. Great. Good conversation. Um, so we, the next step is, you know, really now coning in on what those success indicators and identifying the two to three for each of the goal area. And, you know, are there things uh from the board and in, this is another one, it's like, hold the question in your head because I'm gonna show you some of the indicators that we can easily access and maybe some things that maybe you haven't thought about. Um, and then the staff will analyze that that data that we currently have and the data that we may need in order to to monitor trends over time. And the balance between qualitative, like the hard number stuff, and then, I mean, the qualitative, the, you know, feedback that we get from people and that quantitative piece of like the hard numbers. And wanting to really have a good balance of, you know, we say we're doing effective communication because we've done all these things, right? Every, every school has a newsletter, every, you know, we're, we're doing publications twice a a year, and we're doing all these things, and we have great open rates, but
We have SEO plans at every school.
Right. But do families know that? Do they feel like they're being communicated to? Like, what's the balance between those two things? We put out all this stuff, but families still feel like they're not getting good communication.
Oh, I get the phone calls. Five seven one one thousand.
Oh, yeah.
It comes a lot. It's quite often. I, I didn't understand why I was getting them. Then I found out why. So, listen, yes, number one, I said, whoa, it's a lot of calls.
Um, and then
Don't forget to text.
We need to
I try not to read them. I wanna come and be as misinformed and then I can say, I also know nothing about what's happening here because no one ever communicated with me. I apologize. I'm so sorry.
Malik, you gonna be okay?
I'm done, I'm done. I can't.
These mics are on.
I know.
Sorry, President Strong.
And then, uh, set the date for when we come back with some of tho- those indicators. But I want you to look at this next slide of, oh, that's really small. You guys have it on your screen. No, I can, I, I have, I have a copy here. I knew, but I'm visually challenged these days. So, under academic achievement, you could look at things like preschool enrollment. Um, you could look at the percentage of the kids in the area that are enrolled in preschool. We could look at kids that are in our preschool versus kids who have preschool experience. There's lots of ways to capture that data. And then to look at, what is the correlation between kids in preschool and how they perform later on in elementary? Is there a correlation? Is that something that we need to keep investing in? Those types of questions. Um, elementary and student report cards, graduation, merit child acceptance, uh, percentage of kids, like, I think Josh spoke to this without even seeing my notes, AP and CTE and other courses or college and high school, those types of things. When you look at partnership and participation, you can look at participation data, correlation between particip- participation and grades. The climate survey, which we ask specific questions about, do kids feel supported? Do they have adults they cared? Do you think their teachers care about them academically? A- all of those types of things. Um, we have our community investment dollars and the reports of where those dollars are going and where we're investing them in. And then the communication methods, things like, you know, counting and keeping track of what communications are going out and how like, how parents feel about those communications. Um, for safe and supported, we have a climate survey, which also talks about student safety. We also have a student health survey that talks a little bit about how students feel. Um, we have how many meals are delivered, what's the adoption rate for that type of thing? We have a building for achievement data, which is our actual building. We don't talk about that a lot, how far we are in replacing all the schools, how many schools have vestibules, how many all of that type of stuff. Um, participation in social emotional support, kids that are going to seek counseling, you know, we have all these mental health partners, how many hours of support are we providing to kids, things like that. Um, and then participation in ELO activities. So these are just some of the ones that are readily out, that we ha- we have or that we can tap into. Um, when we, when you start to think about, you know, when you look at those goal areas, what specifically, what are the one, two, or three things to, was the point, short, medium, long term, um, that we would really wanna focus into and some of the ways we might be able to track that data? And I think one of the things you guys said to me in my first meeting with you is it was pretty cumbersome, right? So we've gone from like five to three. And then how do you visually represent some of these things in a way that's really easy? And then always have that option for the people who just love data and wanna go deeper. There's like a place where you can like want more data, you wanna play with it, he- here's this button over here. But a really nice, easily digestible visual that people would see, right, as soon as they look at it. Here's the goal, here's our statement of what we want to happen, here's how we're tracking our data. Some directional, you know, um, things, like we're trending in the right direction, we're s- we're holding flat. Some places, that's good data that we're holding flat, and some places we're trending down, and that's also, you know, so that's what we're hoping to build.
Wow.
So with that, you also, is there other indicators that you think you could email myself or Tanisha as well? I'd caution us from correlations from a scientific study perspective. The staff, you know, we will always like to use that, uh, but there are too many variables in correlations, especially spread across too many years. So if we wanna just make a loose correlation, then that's fine, but we can't use that in a scientific kind of study analysis, data statistics in any kind of manner. There are too many variables, okay? But, you know, how are kids doing it from a global perspective? Absolutely. But it's not a one to one or a strong correlation in any manner.
Right.
Okay?
So the question is?
So based on that, is there anything that, going back to like the statements and thinking about it in its whole, are there things that you're like, well, well, we know, our main business is graduation, so we're always going to talk about graduation data in in some form or fashion as it relates to academic achievement? Out of all the areas and kind of looking at some of these things, are there things that you're like, that one is really important to me? Or when I go out and talk to people, this is the thing that I need to be able to sh- show people or wanna point them back to?
One of the things I noticed from um is the trusted adult, that every student have the trusted adult, and yet in the safety, safe and supported, that doesn't show up.
It's part of the climate survey. It's one of the questions of the climate survey. There's a direct question in there.
So one of the things, and Tanisha and I, uh, keep on going back and forth, and she has to remind me, there's not gonna be a per se a one to one.
Yeah.
And so it's not gonna be like safe and reports and
Yeah, yeah.
So I wanna bring this, uh, maybe go back one slide, cause this helps me in this. Um, so you think about if there are uh success indicators, there may be two or three um data points for each of those big goals. And one may be, uh, one or two may be a hard data point that has some descriptors in that. And one or two may be um more anecdotal stories, initiatives that we talk about and how the effectiveness of them um in that space.
Yep.
I think it would be helpful for you folks, uh, as you've s- got a chance to see this, to unpack, you know, and we can send you a printed copies. Really work through the language one more time. Identify any kind of data, you know, go back through your previous benchmarks, any kind of success criteria that you just, it's just, and and I would, I'm gonna give you two weeks max. And we'll send this in a little bit of homework, okay? And we'll just give you two weeks and just like, any kind of success criteria you think would be helpful to, for these two, you know, two to three for each of the goals that you like.
Can I ask a, just a clarifying question around the data slide? Just so that I'm tracking how it's presented. So the way that I'm reading the slide, the last one is like, so we have the three goals and these would be, what's listed within is the examples, would be the two to three um in uh indicators, right? The success indicators, is that how I'm?
So, yes, and, so, if you were to say that um you wanted to, why, the way I think, you told me there's like, I'm gonna mess up the number now, a certain number of preschoolers that attend each year, I mean, kindergartners that start at each school year. And wanting to have enough s- spots so that you actually would have everybody who's going into kid, you wouldn't, it's not a one to one. But you want enough spots that that number of kids could, you could have, you could say kindergarten enrollment is like you wanted to have ninety five percent of those eligible kids start kindergarten. We could track that data in multiple ways. These are just examples of ways we could track the data. So if you, if you guys could get clear on what you would want those goals to be, then we can then do the match of, here's the data that we can find for that. If there's a data point that you're like, that data point is something I would wanna be able to rattle off the top of my head to be able to tell people, show them we're doing a good thing. I, that's helpful information too.
So, yes, so when you think about academic achievement, how is, that you want to tell, what is the success criteria that builds trust within the community? Says, you know, Tacoma Public Schools does produce academic achievement. And so these are some of the ones that we've listed as some possible examples?
So, for example, of one of the examples is meals. Now, meals in and of itself isn't, isn't really what we're reflecting in what I would hope would be our ten year goal.
Right.
Is that they're, you know, healthy, not just nu- nutritious, but also, you know, um grown, you know, organically, or whatever the things are that we're helping to have kids, but also have access to meals. Uh, all those different pieces, whereas um here it just says meals. So I'm assuming that that these are just, as you said, placeholders for and and examples. But so is your request in two weeks, you want us to look at these and see if we have different ones or if we have, or which one of these we like or all of the above?
All of the above. Unpack them and say, and so we just put some buckets there for you, safe and supportive. We just gave you some examples. Tease them out. Remember, this is your strategic plan. And the essence of this is, is like, what is it that and, you know, the the tension for me is, is that we have to build trust within the community that says, in this world of we never agree on what success is. That we have this opportunity to say, you know, and remember the last time is, and we've had this conversation in the past, is I never, uh, thirty-seven indicators was way too much for me, right? But we could never agree in getting it smaller, right? Because it's really hard to like take things off the plate. And so now we've gotten it down and we have these three big buckets. And we've, now we, and we've identified that there are really, within those three big buckets, if you think about it, there are twelve success criterias within those. Three under the, what does it mean for students? You know, four for the adults and five for the system. You want to start to think about, what are the things that you're gonna say that, you know, whether they're stories, initiatives, or hard data that you're gonna want the system to produce to say, it may not be perfect. But this is what we do to show that there is transparency and accountability that says the system is getting better.
Okay, I have a question. So I'm looking at current strategic plan, to look at some of those indicators because that helps. And then the ones presented, and I have two questions, and I don't mind two answers. Okay, so what is community investment dollars? What would that, what does that entail? What does that mean?
So, um, the buildings team, when they, um, build, they actually track how much money they put back out in the community, how much they spend on local businesses, minority women owned businesses. How many hours, like if we have kids that work in apprenticeship program, so they have a whole set of data that they use for their purposes that we don't talk about in terms of our reinvestment back in the community.
Gotcha. Next one, um, building for achievement data.
The same, so it's what they build, so it's like Well, it's also like, how many buildings of the, we have a uh, ten year plan for built rebuilding buildings, like where are we at in that? How many more buildings we have? How many vestibules are we at? How many people have security cameras? There's lots of data in that realm too, that we could talk about in terms of creating safe and supportive environments.
Gotcha. And then the last one, um, participation in social emotional support, I think this question's for Josh. What all would that entail?
It could be right back to the meals, there's so many things, so, uh, it could be referrals to our after school m- mental health providers, it could be referrals to counseling in-house. It could be a variety of things. We would have to define that.
Okay, yeah, because I'm I'm looking at the current strategic plan, and like it's kind of helping guiding my thinking. And I'm looking at the examples from this one, and I want to make sure like I'm looking in the right places to get the right indicators to complete this assignment, because I love completing assignments. I want to make sure that, like, I'm fully understanding what some of these terms are. And in order to not just cross them off.
Yeah, well, and we can, we'll be your resources back and forth, yeah. I think that's why it's important that we don't try to just do it all tonight, is you do a little bit of homework in in that space.
You know, one thing I'm noticing from your old goals, from the, I guess the current goals, is the ones from before are one single pinprick data point. And the, I think the improved data systems that we have, that Josh was talking about earlier, could allow for you to combine a couple of these. So instead of just saying, what is the graduation rate at Tacoma School District, you could say, how many students gra- like the bottom three there, oh, it's kind of hard to see. But how many students graduate with a Vanny? How many students graduate taking an advanced course? Instead of like before, you could now start to combine a couple. So if it feels like maybe two or three aren't enough, when you think about like combining the data, that one might actually be a metric for several things.
Yeah, and that's what I was looking at in the partnerships from the current goals. It was like, climate surveys listed four times. And it's just like the four different areas within the climate survey, it's just like, the climate survey is the answer.
And thinking about like data visualization, you know, we we've got the dashboard and we've got Basecamp, and you can do lots of things in there. But also, there's lots of ways in data visualization visualization where you can show multiple data points in one data visualization, right? So if we are talking about graduation, we might have the graduation rate up there. Maybe there might be a bar graph right beside it that shows how many of those kids have Vannys, how many, what's, it might be color coded so that you see African American versus like, there's lots of ways to visually show data, but what what I need to know is like, if you want a data point that talks about col- uh, high school graduation and readiness, and we decided that readiness means that you have a verified acceptance, you've taken five courses, and you're going to, cool. Well, let's look at, let's play with the visualization of that data, and does it answer the question that you you all have to use this data for, what do your constituents ask you? And how do you answer the question about Tacoma Public Schools is doing what we said we were gonna do? We wrote three goals that said we are gonna, uh, we're gonna be about academic achievement, partnership and participation. When you guys, we talked the first time, you guys were like, I don't want to just account of community partners. I want to know what kind of community partners, what kids go to that, and what's the result for those kids? Cool, let's figure out how to show that that data in a way that you understand it, that you feel comfortable pointing somebody to it. That you feel comfortable explaining it to people in a way that makes you feel like I'm doing the work that we're doing, and that you feel comfortable questioning us about if we're producing the thing that you want us to do. This should be about goals that that drives actions, that drives results.
Can I make a request, um, just so everybody isn't guessing, um, or with the, we're all using the same information. I know you jotted down, I've, I've, I've looked back at the numbers and I think I've got the three, four, and five. But maybe add a slide that shows which in each of the category students, um, partners, and so that we
I will send you a homework assignment.
Okay, I love it.
Look at everybody working.
Perfect.
Yep, yep. With with Tanisha's help.
I just want to make sure we're all using the same.
I was about to say, oop, you got that one.
You have to side deck. I will work with you.
Are there any other questions or or gaps?
Thank you for for doing this. This is really incredibly precise and really informative.
We are gonna start going fast, and so I just want to remind folks, it is the end of February. We are gonna start moving into adoption very quickly, and so you are gonna start to see it's going pretty quickly. Based on the feedback that we have, we have basically three goals. Okay, so we're, you know, we're gonna move into probably adoption of goals into March. Okay, well, in that space, we'll adopt the goals first, and then we'll adopt the success criteria. We're we're pretty much there with the goals. You can, based on, you know, you didn't make any decisions tonight, but you're pretty much there with your goals. We didn't hear any fatal flaws, we heard some minor tweaks, so we'll do two readings in that space. Um, we heard that, you know, Tanisha pretty much hit it out of the park with some minor tweaks of the one goal, okay? We, don't be surprised if we propose a ten year plan with those three goals, okay? And when then, the work will start to be around the success criteria. Okay, the success criteria will probably be at more of an April or May timeframe, and that will be the next heavy lift piece. July.
July, or it's August.
Yeah, same, 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 yep. Those are rough timelines, but just, I just don't want you to be surprised, you know, the spring will start slipping by here pretty quickly, and so I just, you know. Okay, sound good?
Sounds like a plan.
Go team.
I'll give you an update from, uh, a few blocks down. Lincoln is in fourth, Silas is in sixth. Still within hunting distance.
And what is left to do is still tonight, or is it tomorrow?
There's still a couple rounds tonight. Uh, James has some floor passes if you decide to go. They don't start till tomorrow until I think four o'clock. And they're all medal rounds tomorrow. There will be lots of tears and celebrations tomorrow.
We know where Josh will be.
I will, I will not be there. My heart won't handle it.
They do the, um, the march of the champion, like, tonight.
Yeah, I don't handle those things anymore. I keep it out of it. I I shift to become a basketball fan now. It's like, I can handle that.
Oh, I I can feel it in my stomach.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I can handle the early rounds, not anything after this. I watch, I watch games now, no more, no more sports.
And with, and with that, this meeting is adjourned. Kevin, cut the mics.